Are we ready? I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Kara Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
City manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with our invocation led by a fairly new face, Pastor Mark Jones of Desert Hills Church of God, and that will be followed by the invocation given by Commissioner Paul. Or the Pledge of Allegiance. Did I say invocation?
Yeah.
You knew what I meant, right? I could tell by Stella's face. I'm sorry, the pledge given by Commissioner Paul. Sorry about that.
Lord, we just come to you tonight thanking you for the day, for the health and the strength that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for our leaders here in this town. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for all our commissioners and all of those that stand in leadership. And God, I would just ask tonight that you would bless them, Lord, that you would give them wisdom, because your word says that you give wisdom unabradingly. You give it without even question. So, Lord, as they make decisions for this city and this region, Lord, I just ask that you be with them, lead them and direct them. Keep them safe, Lord. Give them a refreshing tonight when they go home and go to bed. And Father, we thank you for all of these things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the nice thing is, I know if I had to ask you to do the invocation, it wouldn't be a problem. So, alrighty, let's get started here. Get my bearings straight. Okay, we are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and we will move on to presentations. Information on the city charter, and that will be provided by City Clerk Rachel Hughes.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, thank you. So, this is just an overview of the city charter, just past city charters and maybe how they were just formed. So, we're going to talk about the purpose and responsibilities of the committee. So, the city charter committee meets every ten years to review the charter, and that is per the charter itself. The committee members' responsibilities are to review the effectiveness of the city charter and give recommendations as an advisory board to the city commission for their consideration. The charter committee is a public body subject to the Open Meetings Act, and the committee members are not paid, so it's just strictly voluntarily. We are going to go over some of the state statutes. I do have three of them here. So, the governing body of the municipality may appoint a charter commission on its own initiative also at any time, so we have had those periodically in addition to the ten years. The charter committee shall consist of not less than seven members, and you will see this language in the resolution coming before you in the last item of our agenda. No more than a simple majority shall belong to the same political party, and the city clerk will get that voter registration list from the county clerk. The charter committee shall prepare a charter providing for the government for the municipality and shall complete the proposed charter and file it with the city clerk within a hundred and eighty days of the state of its appointment. So, I do want to advise that it is better to complete this much earlier than the one hundred and eighty days just because of requirements later in doing the resolution with the county clerk. The charter committee shall elect its own chairman. So, we have state statute three fifteen seven, which talks about the provisions, the restrictions, and the legislation. The charter may provide for any system or form of government that may be deemed expedient. ...body. The presiding officer of the governing body shall, by proclamation, which is, we actually call it a resolution here, will shall call a special election, which in this case, it can be in conjunction with the election that's going to be held for electing new officers to the governing body. So, the electors of the municipality and the question of whether or not the municipality shall adopt the charter prepared by the charter committee. And if the charter fails to be approved by the governing body, the charter shall be returned to the chairman of the charter committee together with a letter of transmittal stating the reason why the charter has been rejected by the governing body. And so, this process will go back and forth between the committee and the commission until, obviously, there is a deadline of the one hundred and eighty days that it shall be done by. So, then we have just the history of the charter committees from nineteen ninety-three, two thousand three, two thousand eleven, and two thousand fifteen. So, here we have, just to recap again, the minutes concerning the resolution stated for nineteen ninety-three that there would be no more than fourteen residents of the city that may be appointed. Each member of the governing body may appoint two residents to serve on the committee, make written recommendations within sixty days of its appointments, and for nineteen ninety-three, there was only ten members that were actually appointed. In two thousand three, we had a resolution of no more than fourteen residents, and each member of the governing body did nominate two residents of the city to serve on the commission, on the committee, and the commission at this point nominated two from their district. They made written recommendation within sixty days of its appointment, and for this year, there was fourteen members that were appointed. In two thousand eleven, there were fourteen members that were appointed, and their main review here was to include having a mayor-elect-at-large. In two thousand fifteen, this resolution stated no more than seven residents, so they actually went down. And as we just read in state statute, that's no more than seven residents, and then the commission obviously decided no more than seven. So, there were seven appointed that year. And so, for the upcoming dates and frames, I'll briefly go through these also. So, we do have a very tight deadlines here. So, January tenth today, I do have the resolution on the, on this agenda. February seventh, the city commission shall submit their nominations to the city clerk. On the fourteenth, so that gives almost a whole month, the city commission appoints city charter members, and that is during a city commission meeting. By April eleventh, within sixty days of the appointment of the committee, recommendations and presentations are due to the city commission. And then, by June sixth, the city, the charter committee shall prepare a charter providing for the government of the municipality and shall complete the proposed charter and file it with the city clerk. So, again, I must add that the sooner is better in order to meet the tight deadlines to get the resolution to the county clerk. So, even if we meet the deadline, we also want to submit it early because there are requirements. For instance, getting that question on the ballot. So, the way that works is you submit the questions. There's other municipalities that submit their questions, so the first ones that submit and get approved are on that ballot. If we are amongst the last ones and there's no room on that ballot, our municipality will have to pay for a second page. June thirteenth, within five days after filing, with the city clerk, the charter being approved by the majority of the governing body, the presiding officer of the governing body shall, by proclamation, or in this case, resolution, call a special election to pose the question to the ballot, to the ballot, to the voters. And by August twenty-fifth, that is our deadline to get that resolution to the county clerk. And November seventh, the charter amendment question shall be on the ballot if that is the way the commission's going to take direction. So, appointing the committee members is simple, passing that resolution, which is tonight, on tonight's agenda, and the commission appoints the members. And lastly, this is just some information for the committee members for their first meeting, so we will present the purpose and responsibilities of the committee, just like I did. Briefly go over the Open Meetings Act, select a chairman or chairperson, select a vice-chairperson, pass Open Meetings Act resolution, select the dates and times of the meetings, and the committee just begins to develop a plan for reviewing that charter. And that is all the information I have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Did you have staff get us what was on the twenty fifteen, the amendments that were on the, from the twenty fifteen charter committee?
What exactly are you asking for? What was the question that was on the ballot?
The questions that were on the ballot. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't remember there being one in twenty fifteen, but I wasn't here, so.
It was, we had the questions that went the previous election to the, to the residents in Alamogordo. Not all of those passed, so it was brought back a year or two years later, and it was incorporated as one question. So, you probably want both of them if you want.
I remember the twenty, I remember the twenty eleven one. Those were all on there as one question, but the twenty fifteen one, I don't.
I might have that reversed. It may have been one big question that didn't pass, so they broke it up into smaller ones, or it was vice versa.
Yes. Yeah, if you can send those out to us tomorrow or whatever.
Rachel can get those.
Yeah, you want the one sent to you, to the two thousand fifteen and the two thousand eleven?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can send those out to all of you.
That way, everybody has a kind of a history. I was here in twenty eleven, so I remember that one, but the twenty fifteen, I don't remember.
Sure, I'll send those to you by email.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Okay, that's not a specific one. Okay, now I was just making sure it wasn't a specific. First, we have Anthony Tuminaro. Hi. If you'll state your name for the record, and just a reminder, you have three minutes.
Okay, that shouldn't be a problem.
All right. Thank you. How are you tonight?
My name is Anthony Tuminaro, and I just, the guy that owned the benches in town, and I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor and the commissioners for all the years that we've had business, and we bought, well, my son bought part from Jim Lynch, and then my wife bought the other part through Tony Duran. And then, my son went to pursue the, you know, Hollywood, the movies, and my wife left me, so I ended up, everything stuck on me. But anyways, so, but I wanted to thank you very much for the privilege of, of, you know, working with the city, and it's been a very good relationship all through the years, and, and the businesses benefited the, the local businesses. And so, I want to thank you for that privilege, and if, if ever, and I want to thank you for giving me a little extra time, because all the contracts ended on the thirty-first, and I couldn't get all the benches out. So, thank you very much for that. Anyways, I just wanted to thank you, if there's, if ever you decide you want to go in that direction again. I live in Alamogordo. I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have, is it Carol Hernandez?
I am Carol Hernandez, and I have recently noticed that the benches throughout the city have been removed. And I believe that Alamogordo would like to think of itself as a city of kindness. If so, it can begin by putting back the benches for the cities least capable. There are many disadvantaged and some with disabilities who rely on those benches. I saw a woman the other day at Tenth Street in Cuba who was sitting on the pavement. Not a very warm place for a disabled person, but she had no other choice. Please consider replacing those benches. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move on to city manager's report.
Okay. Seems like it's been quite a while since we've all been here, so Happy New Year. I know it's a few days late, and I thought I would start the new year off and make brownie points with the chief of police, since they've had a very active month now.
Extremely.
To give you, to give you all an update on some of these things where you've seen the PSAs come out, and some of the other activities that you haven't, you haven't heard about.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Mayor, Commissioners, just a little, some review stuff, what we've done. My, our department, everybody knows we're still short staff, but these guys are, I'll just say they're busting their tails. And, you know, some of the larger things that we've accomplished is we've solved the murder case on Dewey. For the most part, we've made one arrest in that. It's still ongoing, but that case is, will be wrapped up. But it's not just our department on that type of case. We have our major crime unit team, which consists of the DA's office, consists of Lincoln County Sheriff's Department, Ridosso Police Department, Otero County Sheriff's Office, and our department. So, we all help each other with these larger investigations, and it makes a real great team effort, and we can wrap up a lot of, a lot of stuff pretty quickly most of the time. With that, the Travis Court murder case, we've arrested two adults and two juveniles in that case. The other night, we had the shooting at an occupied dwelling in a house over on Greenwood. That led to, to arrest. That was just us. We, the car went into the county, so we had to call the sheriff's office out to help us make that arrest out there due to jurisdictional issues. But we ended up arresting two people out of that. One of my guys made a traffic stop where he was able to obtain a search warrant on the vehicle and seized over two hundred fentanyl pills. Two people were arrested out of that. The most recent thing was just this past Saturday. One of the larger things was the gentleman over on Arizona who had, you know, basically went over there for open door sort of thing, ended up having some warrants for his arrest, and once my officer was inside, they happened to see some things in plain view, and we just backed out and obtained search warrants that come from, we ended up calling Holloman, a bomb dog from out there come in, and sure enough, there were a couple of bombs, or pipe bombs located. Once that was done, we backed out and had to get more warrants. Every time we find something different, we have to back out and get, redo the warrant and go back in. So, I think those officers were over there from about nine o'clock in the morning and finally left around eleven o'clock that night, and then had to be back at work at seven the next morning. So, long day for them. Everybody's been doing a lot of work. I do have, we have two, I've done a presentation, it's been a few months ago, about two of the guys retiring, one of the sergeants going to retire, and basically, I've offered them positions to work a easier task, if you will, where they're not working shift work. They're working eight to five, Monday through Friday, or not eight to five, one's seven to four, the other one's nine to six. But eight hours a day, Monday through Friday, and they're just mainly doing traffic enforcement stuff. We received a complaint from some folks on South Florida, and I, I put that out there. I just talked to the gentleman Friday, I believe, and one of these guys that was going to retire that decided to stay, if I could put him in this special role, ended up writing like twenty tickets over on South Florida today for people speeding. So, through that school zone and stuff over there. So, they're out there. They're, one of them right now is training one of our PSAs. We have four of those slots, three, one started today, one's still in training, and one just started out on his own. And those guys are, you know, I think they're out there already making a difference, to be honest with you. They're mainly traffic and helping out the officers with whatever they need help with. They can take your smaller investigations. If, you know, graffiti call where there's no suspect in the call whatsoever, it doesn't really require a certified officer to go take that kind of call. That's what they're, they're out there doing. Any questions so far about anything? And then, something that we're gonna, was gonna touch on a little bit is this thing that's been going on at the high school the last two days. We just basically have people exercising their First Amendment. If people are protesting, as long as they're not breaking, there's no law against protesting. When people protest or people against this protest, that's sometimes when different laws get broke. But if people are out protesting, we can't, there's, it's not a violation, it's your First Amendment right to protest, as long as, as long as you're doing it in a way where you're not breaking the law. The one thing that we can do, is if, say, we have two large groups or something, we can attempt to try to separate the groups, like, stay over here, stay over here. We'll stand between them so we don't have a fight going on. So, we can try to do some things to prevent that from happening ahead of time, but it's not a, it's, if we make people stop doing that, it's, it's going to come back on us. And I don't know, what I encourage you guys to do if you haven't is Google First Amendment auditors. That'll really give you some insight to what people can do exercising their First Amendment rights.
Yeah, so I actually called about that today, and I, I get all that. I wasn't concerned about that. My concern was that they were yelling at the kids. That wasn't even my concern. My concern is, how far were they willing to go? And are these kids engaging with them? And that, that was my bigger concern was, you know, if they're just going to stand there and act a fool, let them act a fool. That's their thing. But, you know, they're, they're at a high school where, back in my day, I don't know why, because I was not a great kid, but I just would have never thought of talking to an adult that way. But that's kind of not the case these days. And so, I was just having visions of these kids engaging with these people and it getting out of hand, and that, that was my concern.
That's, that's where we show up. We can't keep them from protesting, but when we start getting that engagement, we try to.
Right, right.
So, what, you can, you guys can try to yell over each other until, it can get to a point. You have, you have some residential areas over there. Someone down the road's calling saying, hey, they're disturbing me. Well, now that gets into some type of unreasonable noise. So, it's just, we have to be really, really careful with the First Amendment rights.
Kind of interesting they just pop up out of the blue the last couple of days. I've never, it's not that I've never seen them at the high school, it's I've never seen them before at all, and so it's interesting that they're showing up. So, I, I did want to say that I have noticed that you guys have worked incredibly hard, and for all the garbage that you take, and a lot of it is on social media, and, you know, only if you care, then you care, right? But obviously, we don't. But I think that the way you put out those PSAs and tell the public what's going on, I think it's been incredibly transparent, and certainly, in my opinion, more transparent than I've ever seen it. You know, understanding, the public, of course, needs to understand there's certain things you can't say. And, but I just want to give you guys kudos, because I, I think, you know, I, it's funny, because I see the little comments, like, what's happening to our little town, and I'm like, this is nothing new. It's just that you're hearing about it now, and you didn't hear about it before. And I don't think a lot has changed. I mean, fentanyl is probably a little newer, you know, it would back in the day. It probably wasn't fentanyl, it was something else. But, but I think the difference now is that we're trying to be open and transparent with the public, and in my opinion, that makes a difference, because if the public sees that we're transparent and that they know that we know this is going on, then they're more likely to hopefully report something like that. So.
We try to, there's, there's things, like you said, social media, and, and it's out there. And I'll, I'll be very honest with you. There's times that my wife tells me, hey, what's going on before I even get notified.
I know, yeah.
Because of social media.
Yeah.
And so, we hold off on our PSAs a lot of times on purpose.
Right.
Because we, just from learning in the past, you can throw things out too quickly, and it's, might be completely wrong from what come in at first.
Right, right. And, 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 you know, well, that happened to me the other night. We were sitting on the couch, and my husband said, hey, did you see this? And it was, somebody had taken a picture of what was going on in Arizona. I said, I don't know anything about it. And I thought, oh, wait a second. And I looked, and I go, oh, yeah, apparently I got an email like four hours ago. Like, I, you know what I mean? I don't, I'm not paying attention to that stuff either. But I will say, if you read some of the comments, people are very gracious. Like, the comments, even the tone of the comments and what people are saying when they get on the Alamogordo Police Department, the social media page, and they read that, even their comments are, I think, better. They're nicer, you know what I mean? It isn't so much of the snarky, you know, it's more thanking you, thanking you guys for what you're doing. And so, I think that all of those things are making a huge difference, you know? And nobody's ever going to get it right a hundred percent of the time, but, but it's nice to see that you're mindful of the fact that the public does kind of want to know, even though, you know, you can't tell them everything. But I think just, just putting those kinds of things out really makes a difference. So, yeah.
The only thing I wanted to add was, we are right now, you, you all get the briefing sheets. We are having a rash of burglaries right now, so I know there's people out there that watch this, and we'll probably put another PSA out. Secure your cars.
I just had that conversation with somebody.
Most of these burglaries on cars are, not all of them, but most of them are.
Unsecured.
They just go and pop the doors. If the door opens, they get in the car. If the door doesn't open, they go on to the next, because they're going to find one that opens, so.
Yeah, I just had that conversation with somebody yesterday up in the, up in. Yeah, I just had that conversation with somebody yesterday up in, up in, I still call it my district, it's where I live. And they were saying, all these cars being broken. I said, they don't have to break into them, all they have to do is open the door, because people are not securing. And I'm thinking to myself, why would you leave credit cards or a wallet or something in your car and not lock your car, like?
I have a lot of stolen guns right now.
And stolen guns, yeah. Why would you do that? And, you know, okay, people make mistakes, I shouldn't say it like that. But, but I did notice as I was reading it that every one of them were unsecured. It wasn't, it wasn't that difficult, so.
We had one, they had a broken window on, the rest of them were unsecured.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else? Did I miss anything, sir, since you gave this wonderful opportunity?
Does anybody else have any questions?
You did good, and just like your wife gives you the Facebook report, I get the same thing at home.
My groupie.
I get the same thing too, and I'm on Facebook. But I just, I just don't read that stuff sometimes. It just gets to be a little daunting after a while. Like, I just want to see what my grandkids are doing or what my kids are doing. That's good enough for me, so. Anybody else? No? Well, thank you. Thank you, and thank all the officers for what they're doing, we appreciate it. Is that your city manager's report? That's it? All right.
I was going to give one of the commissioners a hard time about the Civic Center being closed for a month to redo a sewer service line, but I've turned over a new leaf this year.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll with that one. I'm sure there's a hidden, hidden joke in there somewhere. Okay, we are gonna move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything? Commissioner Reardon?
Just got one. All this rebranding, I had a call the other day from a gentleman, but all this rebranding we're doing on all the different city trucks, when did we approve all that, or who brought that up, or, and what's it costing us? That was the question the gentleman asked me.
I don't have the cost off the top of my head. It doesn't cost us any more to do that than it does to put any of the logos on the vehicles. What this does do is make these much more easily identifiable, especially as we get the questions coming in, such and such vehicle was parked over here at the restaurant, or wherever. As opposed to what we had, which was a generic logo, same logo on every vehicle, with the exception of police and fire. They were obviously marked differently. And you had to try and find the four-digit number on the back of the vehicle. Now these are, you can tell, it's Public Works, it's Utilities, it's Code Enforcement. But for cost of the logo, I, I can get that, I don't have that.
Yeah, if you would, you know, that stuff's not cheap, making those, making those logos and putting them on the side of all our vehicles, so.
Yeah, like I said, it's going to be comparable to what normally, what traditionally, I guess, I shouldn't say normally, what traditionally went on the side of the vehicles, but I'll get that for you.
Okay, yeah, I just couldn't answer his question, so I figured I'd ask.
Is that it?
And actually, my pothole along the Vail Road, where are we at on that? I got somebody that can vouch for me.
Well, there's somebody that will be up in front of you a little bit later. Later in the meeting for a different item.
Right in front of the convenience center exit gate. That one's getting bad enough that we're gonna start blowing tires on it.
I hit that one today.
Yes. So if we could get that one fixed properly, instead of just throwing more asphalt in it every time it rains, so. Thank you.
Anything else? Nobody? Okay, well, tomorrow afternoon at, and I think I saw Kim Underwood here. There she is right there. I don't know if she's gonna talk about it, but tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock. Four o'clock, we are having the kickoff for, I believe it's a three-day event, for the rebranding. Everybody got confused, they said, why are they rebranding the library? I said, that's not exactly right, exactly. It's more of a, I'm calling it more of an updating, actually. I'm calling it more, being more current myself. I don't know, maybe, maybe I'll see it different. But, but that's what I told him, is really just becoming more current. And so that starts tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock. We had, when was that? When did we do the commission dedication? Does anybody remember the date? Little bit, little bit ago. When was it?
December 23rd.
December 23rd. For those of you who missed it, we had the dedication of the commission chambers to change the name to the Don Carroll Commission Chambers. His family was here. We had several former commissioners and former mayors here. I believe Commissioner McDonald was here, Commissioner Wright was here, and Commissioner Paul was here, and of course, myself. So that was, I, considering, I, I think it was, started out to be this, and it ended up being more like this at the last minute. And it was a good thing, I think it turned out really well. So that was exciting. And if you haven't noticed or haven't got a chance, you can look out there and you will see right above the door out here, the new names. So that is there. And I think, I think that was it. I can't think of anything else that we did, all the standard stuff. I know it's been a few weeks, so, so anyway, yeah, I think that's it. I'm sure I've missed like lots of things, right? But whatever, okay, we're gonna move on.
The legislative session?
Oh, you mean, yeah. The legislative session is coming up, you're talking about going up there for it? Yeah, that's right, I am. The opening day of legislative session is the 17th of January. And Senator Burton, Senator Griggs asked me to consider coming up there, so I'm going up there for that. I may go up a few times actually during the session. And I, the consensus is that we need more of a presence in Santa Fe, and I agree with that. I think that, I think the difficulty is that they don't really know a lot about Alamogordo. And I know when I hear people talk about it sometimes that don't live in Alamogordo, I tell them, I don't know what you're talking about, because I live there and that's not the Alamogordo that I know. We are a great community, and people just need to know that about us. So I'm gonna be heading up there for the opening day of legislative session. And then I will probably go a couple of more times, because it's a 60-day session, so I'll probably go a couple more times for that. And I think, now did I get everything? Is that it? Did I miss something?
I got one more comment on that.
Okay.
With this 60-day session coming up, they are saying that they have about a $3.5 billion surplus of money. Depending on what the governor decides that they're gonna do with that, we should maybe have staff draft some letters, as we have some pipelines that we need to do and some other various things. And I think, I talked to the city manager Brian about it, and, you know, we have, I think we have it broke down in five different phases, that are like five to six million dollars apiece. So if, depending on if they're gonna use it for infrastructure, or if they're just gonna go on a spending spree, or whatever they're gonna do, if we could send letters to our state representative over there and our two senators, that, you know, in the event, if they could get us some money for that parallel pipeline, that's very, very important for Alamogordo.
Yeah, yeah, and that was one of the things I had said to Brian. And that's why I think I want to go up there a few times, is because.
Senator Griggs knows the importance.
He does know about it, yeah, I've talked to him about that.
He knows extremely the importance of it.
Right.
You know, as soon as Benita comes back online, we're gonna lose that pipeline.
Right, exactly. No, I know, I know how important it is. And then, you know, just kind of looking at some other things that we feel like are critical issues for Alamogordo. Even if, you know, even if we know we're not gonna get anything this year, you know? I mean, we've got the stuff we need to start talking about. And I think the more that we talk about it, and the more of us that do talk about it, the better off we will be. But anyway, that's why I want to go up there and, and just sort of have a presence and let them know we're not just, you know, sitting down here expecting it, so. Yeah, okay. Anything else? Yes.
Before you move on from that, yes, we have quite a number of projects that could be considered shovel-ready. Some are much more important than others. But in dra, drafting the letters, definitely no issue. But if you all, I know you can't vote, because this is an item to vote on, but it would be more appropriate, carry a little bit more weight. I mean, I have no problem signing it, but it really should be signed.
By the mayor.
By the mayor. And more than likely, word is going to get to the representatives, the senators, et cetera, on what's gonna be done with the surplus. And it's gonna be a very narrow timeframe, more than likely not hit a commission meeting where we can bring an item forward to get you all to authorize the mayor signing the letter for whatever the project is. Because it's gonna depend upon how they decide that surplus is going to be used and if we have a project that meets that criteria.
Actually, kind of speaking of that, sorry, this is dragging out a little longer than it's supposed to.
That's okay.
Also, our road study, where are we at on that? Because that's other, I was gonna ask about that, but where are we at for them bringing that report to us?
I just got the data and the analysis yesterday.
Can you, can you come up? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. Rachel was pointing at her ear, so I assumed she couldn't hear you, sorry.
So yesterday, I got the data from the consultant, which listed the condition of all the roads in the, in the city. They also have a full list of programming for 20 years of street improvements. They want me to review it. They're saying that in 20 years, we can't get accomplished what the whole city, based on the funding that we're seeing is available. So I haven't had a chance to review the project list. The report is due in February. So this, we're getting to the tail end of it.
Okay. When are we gonna see some of that?
It's up to my boss.
City manager?
After we have the completed report. So she's saying end of February, so it'd be right during, right during the budget time.
We're not gonna see it till May?
The report's due in February from.
It's due at the end, end of February.
Okay, so we should see it sometime towards the end?
It's March, April, yes.
Okay, so we'll see the, the report sometime late February, early March?
If the timeline, if there aren't major edits, she just received the, the draft. So depending upon edits, if we get it at the end of February, as soon as we get it, it'll go out to you all.
Okay.
And part of that's gonna be the discussion about the programming and how we're short, you know, we have shortfall on the funding. How we, do we want to push that out to 30-year program? Do we want to be more aggressive with funding? How do we want to deal with all those issues? And so that's gonna be a conversation.
Probably a decision that, that we need to discuss as far as the funding goes and that kind of stuff, so, you know, but.
No, we need to have, we need to review it, have our recommendations, so if there's something, so the report can be finalized and, and put out to you. And yes, then funding can be discussed, and it could be accelerated or expanded, depending upon funding availability.
Is that it?
I think so, thank you. The, the last thing I'll mention is next meeting, I am going to be, and I will make it as brief as I can, but I'm apparently required to do a State of the City report. And I am gonna start working on that now. I actually met with Brian today to go over just some highlights, and I'll put that together and have that ready for the next meeting. And that'll be the 24th, I guess? Today's the 10th, right? 24th? Yeah, the 24th, okay. All right, anybody else? You're good? Okay. Well, let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Paul. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Ruden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We did not have anything removed from the consent agenda. We're gonna move on to new business. Item seven, consider and act upon approval of change order number three for Public Works bid number 2021-001 to SmithCo. And this is related to Benita Lake Infrastructure Improvements. And Bob Johnson, there you are. How are you today?
Good, Madam Mayor, and you?
Good, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, the item for you is change order three to SmithCo Construction for the Benito Lake Infrastructure Improvements Project. With taxes, $237,731.94. It's primarily two large components within this change order. There was a staff requested removal and replacement of the valve house walkway and handrail. This is the area that staff uses to get into the valve house and in and around it. And it's quite literally falling apart. The second large item is correction of differing site conditions at the dam cap, which doubled the planned quantity of concrete. There's a slight reduction of a couple of bid items, they're fairly inconsequential. This will be the final change order for this project.
How did we miss the quantities of concrete that far?
It was a differing site condition that no one could have anticipated. Prior to, part of the scope of the work, the contractor was to remove the dam cap, which is the part that the public would walk on, and replace it. Prior to that endeavor, the contractor performed a survey. That survey revealed a six-inch dip that spanned the entire width of the dam. So the dam is 480 feet wide, approximately 14 and a half, I'm sorry, 480 feet long from one end to the other, and about 14 and a half feet wide. The survey revealed that from end to end, it essentially dipped towards the middle by about six inches. When it was first brought to our attention, we verified the survey was correct. City staff, primarily utility staff, reviewed about a century's worth of historical documents. And it was also elevated to the state engineer dam safety bureau's office, because they also have their fair share of historical documents. Those reviews revealed nothing to indicate that it was purposely done. And since this falls under the jurisdiction of the dam safety bureau, we asked them what they wanted us to do. And they said rebuild it level. So that was half of the differing site condition and quantity. And since they footed $900,000 of the bill for this contract, it's kind of hard to say no.
That's just, that's a lot of material.
The second part of the differing site condition is when the dam cap was removed, the substrate, the concrete substrate below it was all but disintegrated. So it, there was no stable surface to put that, a new dam cap on top of. So the contractor had to demo all of that out, grind it smooth, make it level, put in concrete at the structure under the cap, and then build the cap back up.
So they've already performed the work, or?
It is. It was a differing site condition. If we had stopped that project, the cost would have been phenomenal. So the funding is available, always has been.
Yeah, they're pretty brave to perform that work before that change order was approved, so.
When the directive came down from the dam safety bureau to get it done, that was pretty much, they're not the kind of people you say no to.
Anybody else have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve item seven?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Reardon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion passes 7-0. We're gonna move on to item eight. Let me just, okay. Consider an act upon approval of change order number four for Public Works bid 2023-003, related to the scenic extension project. And Bob Johnson, you're up again. And Bob Johnson, you're up again.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, the item before you is change order four to Lalo's Dirt and Paving for the scenic drive extension project. $116,126.80, including tax. This is also the final change order for this particular project. As with any project involving estimated quantities, and this was fairly massive with all of the bid items involved. We reconcile all of the actual in-place quantities versus estimated quantities. And the result is a $116,000-plus increase. There is only one significant item that increased substantially, and that was in the area of railroad flagging. And it doesn't take much at what they charge the city at $120-plus dollars an hour for that number to go out of sight. Plus an observer, which is another $160 an hour.
Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item eight?
So moved.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Melton? Almost drew a blank there, sorry. That was not intentional. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move on to.
Bob? Bob? I know this isn't on the agenda, but there's been a lot of questions about the roadway opening. Did you want to give something real brief on?
Not really, but I know you don't, but I wouldn't have called you back.
I actually did, I, I literally just got a call yesterday morning about that. But I think I understand why it's not open, but go ahead and explain it to everybody.
I can tell you that at this point, there is no ETA as to when it will open. There are some mitigating factors involved. Most people just like to throw the general contractor onto the bus at first blush, but that's not the case. The railroad, Union Pacific, did not initiate a dialogue with P and M to get power to the signals until around the end of October. Those of you that deal with P and M on, on large scale, Mayor Pro Tem Wright, it doesn't go that fast. So through a series of events, the, the Smith Engineering, the engineered record has provided all of the drawings and design documents in AutoCAD format to the P and M design team in Albuquerque at their request. Yesterday, I had a dialogue with a different P and M team, also in Albuquerque, where they were asking for copies of our easements with the private landowner. Those were the easements that were granted in exchange for some improvements to their property when we first were able to get this roadway through there. So they have that currently, and I had not seen this in writing, they are looking at pulling power from somewhere around the bypass, bringing it eastward, paralleling the new scenic extension project along the south side, and bringing it up to their little maintenance shack that they have out there where all the power feeds into that will control the crossarms and signals. Estimated cost is about $100,000. Again, that's only verbal, I don't have it in writing. So between city staff, the engineer that represents the railroad, and P and M engineering, there's a pretty healthy dialogue going on. But it will take time because of all of the, I wouldn't say bureaucracy, but there are a lot of regulations involved as far as bringing that much power that far.
Okay. I'm just laughing because it's not like when you call and go, any of my power shut on, or returned on on Friday, or, yeah.
No, this is quite, this is quite essential. And the city will be footing that bill. Our agreement with Union Pacific specifically states that Union Pacific shall bear no cost whatsoever in the construction of this new crossing. So we're in it for the long haul.
So, but, did we not anticipate that?
It never came up. It never did, as far as power to the railroad. And we had assumed, obviously incorrectly, that because it's, the railroad's crossing, we had incorrectly assumed that they would be the client purchasing the power. We've only been playing with it for six years.
Five years, yeah.
Anybody have any questions? Commissioner Ruden, get that look off your face.
That's a road that leads to nowhere out there. That was our last crossing, so I have, I have issues with that crossing, so. And then we're footing the bill, we'll probably have another $200,000 change order coming forward when we get this.
It will not be through this contract. It will be completely separate.
Okay.
Either we will contract directly with P and M, or UP will contract directly with P and M, and UP will request an amendment to their contract with us for the increase.
I will say that I've received some calls wanting to know when, when it's going to open, but they've all been very positive. They're just excited about, actually, I had two or three that were just excited about being able to get to Lowe's and Home Depot easier, so. You know, I, I mean, I know not everybody's excited about it, but, but the calls I've received are very positive, so.
Literally four blocks further going around.
Well, I'm just telling you that they live out that way across the railroad tracks. And one of them obviously was a contractor, and he just wanted to know when it was going to be open, so. So I, I've received some positive feedback. I know not everybody's thrilled about it, but.
And I'm one of the privileged few that's actually gotten a drive on it, and it does drive pretty smoothly, for now.
I do like that you're going to be able to, you know, and I've said all along, I don't like going, getting on the bypass, especially at night from the north side. To me, I'm not comfortable with it, so it just seems to me like if you're going out to the movie theater or something, it's going to be nice to just, not everybody agrees, I got it.
Fairgrounds would have done the same thing, come out about 500 feet further.
Yeah, well, I guess it's all in perspective, but it is what it is, so. Brian, you opened a can of worms, anyway.
You create enough problems, Bob, leave.
Run, just run, okay. All right, well, let's move on to, I believe we're on item nine. Consider an act upon first, is that right? Yeah, first publication of ordinance 1668 repealing sections 24-13-010 and 24-13-020 of the Code of Ordinances. And this is related to resident and mobility disabled parking only. That was a mouthful. Nancy Bessler, how are you again?
I'm good, how are you doing?
Good, thank you.
The purpose of this ordinance revision is to repeal a portion of chapter four to be consistent with our new traffic management policy. We're trying to consolidate all the citizen requests for things like traffic calming devices, any specialty signing, anything related to traffic signing and traffic management for, for enforcement. So repealing this portion of the ordinance is consistent with that, that new policy, which is included in your packet.
Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to, do I have a motion for item nine?
So moved, still reading, hold on.
Do you have a question?
No, I'm just reading through it still, the rest of it, rereading it.
I'll give you just a minute.
This is the one we were talking about earlier today or yesterday, where if there's any issues, it still can come before commission?
Yes, so this, in the, in the policy part, modeled this much like what we have for the leak abatements on a water bill, et cetera. Used to be, well, actually for this, some signs would come before commission, others were done by staff. This is really a staff function, so the request, whether it's for a, a speed limit sign, a residential parking only sign, speed bumps, et cetera. Form will be filled out, turned in at Public Works, a review, and the, the steps are spelled out. I just don't know them right off the top of my head. Nancy does. Will be reviewed by Public Works staff. A determination will be made and given to the applicant on, let's say it's for a residential parking only sign. If it, if it's in their favor, yes, we'll install it. A fee will be applied in that case for a sign. And will be reviewed on a annual basis, or correct, every two years, to make sure that those signs need to stay in place. If it's, if Public Works determines that it's, it's not something that should be done, that also will be given to the applicant in writing. And then just like the leak abatement, if the applicant is not satisfied with that answer, it works up the chain until ultimately my office. If it's still a no, then the applicant can still go to, to commission.
It's not what it says here. It just says present to the city alma mater policy, blah, blah, blah. An applicant may appeal the decision to city manager who will make a final determination. An appeal must be made in writing within 10, 10 business days. It doesn't state that it's going to come to the commission, and, and not that it's going to be a big issue, but.
Well, that's exactly what the leak abatement says too. It's fine, it is, that is staff's final decision.
Cities managers, I guess that's the staff's final decision, but the city manager isn't the, the last deal, the commission is. So, you know, in the event there is an issue, not that, that these are going to be heated, but I still want the public to be able to bring it to the commission because that's our job, is to represent them.
The public could start with commission, but then, turned around, it'll go through, through this process.
I just want to make sure they still have an appeal process over and above the city manager because you're not always going to be here and we're not always going to be here. And you get a tyrant in there, you know.
Anybody can come, for, for example, and I won't use any names, but recently there's been a sewer service line issue.
Yes.
That went through staff. Staff made the final determination and said, no, can't do this. You have to, you have to do something else. That person was before city commission.
Yes.
Multiple times.
Gotcha.
Well, he never officially got on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken. He just wrote us a couple of letters, but.
Okay, he never asked me on the agenda.
That was a health, safety and welfare.
I'm just using that as a, as a recent example of, yes, staff made the final determination. The person was still able to go before commission. They weren't banned from going before commission to plead their case.
I just want to make sure, like I say, you're not always going to be here, we're not always going to be here. Just need to make it, make it kind of, for lack of a better word, idiot-proof, you know what I mean? So for future commissions and future city managers, you know, you're going to probably retire soon, you'll retire soon, so, you know.
I do want to point out that the decision is a collective decision. That, that my department will consult with the police department, will come to a conclusion together. It's not just one department making the call on, on what direction.
Sometimes that makes it more difficult.
Sometimes it does, yes.
I would suspect that much more approvals are done than denials. That would be my guess. A lot of the step is standard, so. But at least it'll make it a little quicker than having to wait two weeks or.
What was happening before is someone would call PD, someone would call Public Works, someone would call the city manager's office, there was no one point of contact, it wasn't consistent.
Right.
They might have called Brian's office, and I didn't know that.
Right.
And then they called my office, and it was just, it wasn't very organized.
And then if it had to go before the commission, then they had to wait till the next meeting, and yeah. So hopefully that will streamline it a little bit. But anyway, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, now do I have a motion to, for item nine? Is it nine? Yeah, item nine. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Burnett. Do I have a second? Second. A second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Ridden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We're going to move on to item 10. Consider an act upon the first publication of ordinance 1667. It's a map amendment to change zoning at 1408 Black Street and Stella Real. Well, you guys are quick. I'm reading this and I looked up and there you are.
Yeah, we're, we're anxious.
City planner, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, City Manager Caesar. Yes, I come in front of you this evening with a request for a map amendment for a location at 1408 Black Street. Here's the zoning map showing, I'm sorry, I don't, I just noticed that dot moved. But if you move it a little over to your left, you're going to see it's at 1408 Black Street. Another thing you're probably going to notice is that parcel, according to our zoning map, shows that half of it's in C3 and half of it's in R1. That's incorrect. We can't have two zoning designations within one parcel. I did research and could not find any documentation of one, of it ever being rezoned to C3. I think that's just an error on our zoning map. I got with GIS and he actually couldn't come up with an answer for me. So after doing all my research and finding that there was no change to our zoning map for that parcel, I went ahead and proceeded. So we have owners of this property, Wallace Holding LLC, making this request for this zoning change going from R1 zoning to, to M, M2 Industrial District. So this is just an aerial map of the location. That dot is in the correct area. Protest area where letters were sent out to property owners within that 200-foot radius per certified mail return receipt. So the property owner is requesting for a map amendment to change the zoning of the property located at 1408 Black Street from R1 single-family dwelling to M2 Industrial District. Findings of fact, the application was filed and all fees were paid. Legal ad was placed in the Alamo Gordo Daily News December 18th of '22. Thirteen letters were mailed by certified return receipt mail to all property owners of record within 200 feet from the property excluding public right-of-way of the property. As of January 9th, there have been two letters returned undeliverable, and I have not received any letters or phone calls of opposition. I am open for questions, and if there are questions I cannot answer, we have Representative Christian Lita here for Wallace Holdings, and he can probably answer more of your questions.
Commissioner Ruden?
Got two things on it. First, first off, I want to make sure I own property within the protest area right across the street. Does anyone have a problem with me voting on this? I'm not financially tied or anything to that across the way, but just want to.
Absolutely can't do it.
Full disclosure, you know. Okay, and then what is, what does the M2 allow for them to do out there?
Manufactured, um, it allows quite a bit, but to be totally open about this. The applicant is looking at a cannabis dispensary business going in that location. They also want to produce manufacturer. Since I am moving towards making a change to the ordinance for cannabis and taking manufactured and production out of, within RC1 or C3 zones, that is the reason for changing it to manufacturing, so.
So you're looking at taking, producing it out of C1 and C3? Okay, what do we do for, I know this is a question when we do that, but what do we do for all the existing businesses that are in C1s and C3s?
We, we will not be able to make any changes there. They complied and opened their businesses under the current ordinance. So I hate using the word grandfathered, but that's exactly what will happen with those businesses. So after my discussion with Mr. Lita about the intent in the future, near future, he agreed that that was the best thing to do is just go on, instead of C3, go on to the manufactured zone.
Anybody have any questions?
That's kind of crazy that that property was R1. It's been a, it was an ice plant. That's kind of crazy that that property was R one. It's been a, it was an ice plant and then it was.
It was New Mexico Solar.
Well, it was raised stucco for years and years, and then it was New Mexico Solar and now this and it was.
Yeah, I don't get it either. And that's why I did so much research trying.
R one the whole time.
Trying to find where it could have possibly changed, but there are no records at all of a rezoning.
There's no records of a rezoning to R one?
No, to C three.
Oh, to C.
Because like I said, you know how you saw the half of the part?
Yeah.
The parcel was C three and then the, the other half was R one. Yeah.
It probably goes back into the eighties when the city acquired all that property out there. It's a, that's a really messed up area as far as surveys and that kind of stuff goes. So.
Yeah, exactly.
What is that light green area there?
Um, Rachel, can you bring my slideshow back up please?
I just didn't know what zoning that is. I know it's all residential, but it's not blue.
I think what you're looking at is R four. That right there?
The light green?
Yeah.
Or the green?
So there's, there's such a mixture of different zoning designations out there. So you've got the darker brown, which is C three. You've got the blue, which is R one. Then the, the green is R four. And then over here towards the bottom, that dark gray is manufactured housing park. Uh, you have industrial, which is a darker purple, um, in different locations there. And then the lighter pink is, um, light industrial.
Why were those, uh, houses there on Lavelle? Why are they zoned R four in that area? I know that doesn't have anything to do with the topic, but.
Yeah. I, I do not know. I mean, I didn't research all that, so I honestly couldn't answer that question on why it was zoned that way.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay.
Let's make a motion to approve item 10, uh, ordinance 1667.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Riden. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Riden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to item 11. Discuss advertising on city property and Commissioner Paul has some information on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of discuss with the commission. Uh, obviously we've had a couple of people here this evening that had discussed and that, you know, specifically the bench advertising that had been around town, uh, received number of calls, um, prior to the end of the year. Uh, the contract for that is since expired, but I've had a number of people that had business advertising on their call and expressed their concerns about, hey, that's my only means of advertising, you know, I don't have any other form of advertising. Several people have reached out to me, uh, saying that they physically use those benches to sit on when they're out and about on foot throughout the city. So just wanted to see if, uh, anybody else, um, has any opinions on those, whether they're a benefit to the community or not. Like I said, and I think we had all received that letter, that contract has since expired. So they've all are in the process of being picked up, but didn't know if anybody else had any opinions. Personally, I feel that they are in some aspects of benefit to the community. There's a lot of small businesses here in town that do utilize them to advertise and it's their main source of advertising and it's their highest lead generator for advertising. There's also people that make use of them when they're walking around town. So, yeah, I just kind of wanted to see if that's anything that the commission has any interest in discussing or not.
I've, I've also had a few calls from businesses stating that that's their primary source of advertisement and that they're kind of upset that they're disappearing. So.
I had a discussion with somebody the other day about it and I said, asked her if she was willing to let them put a bench on her property. And for some odd reason, she was not willing to do that. So, um, I think that's really a resolution to all of this. It's, I don't, I don't think the issue is can't have the benches. I think the issue was on city property and.
It's in the city right of way, and I understand that. And I think that the issue was that, you know, the customers that had their ads on these benches didn't know and people had been accustomed to sitting on them. And now the city's not willing to renew that contract for various different reasons. Brian can elaborate on. And so now they're just all gone and vanished and peoples, you know, we've got one party that has lost sole income source from a business that they had purchased for the purpose of allowing businesses to advertise on these benches. And then others that use the benches to obtain business. So I never personally felt that they were a huge blight to the community or a huge nuisance. And so I just, you know, I don't have enough history. I haven't been around long enough to know kind of the backstory on all that stuff, but just thought it was worth seeing what the rest of the commission thought. If it was anything that might be open to bringing before the commission again to have, go out to bid to have advertising, specifically benches in the public or the city's right of way or not. So.
I as well received numerous phone calls on that. So as far as that goes.
We all did. Yeah.
And I kind of agree with Commissioner Paul. I, I don't really see it as an, as an eyesore around the community. Um, I've had a couple of conversations with the city manager about it. You know, I'm kind of, I don't really care one way or the other, but, um, you know, it may be something that we need to look at, you know? I don't see the difference between, and I'm not going to pick on Z trans, but I don't see the difference between Z trans as bus stops and these park benches sitting on the corner, you know? Other than Z trans, a lot of theirs are just a, a pole with a sign. They don't have a, a place to sit down or anything, but, you know? So it may be something that we need to, you know, the commission needs to look into a little further. So.
Well, and I think, so the item is advertising on city property. So I think advertising is pretty all inclusive. Um, I don't know that we should limit it to, uh, just the benches, although obviously that's why you brought this up. But I think we need to look at it from a different perspective. Where does it stop? Where does that end? We can't, we can't, I, I don't think we can look at this and talk about advertising on city property and only talk about benches. So where does that end? If you look at, um, we have huge discussion, it's been a few years now about billboards. But where are the billboards? They're on private property, right? And private property owners are making money by allowing, I have a friend that has one on her property. And so they're making money by having those billboards on private property. And, um, specifically talking about benches, I see no reason why that can't happen the same way as billboards do. Generally talking about advertising, I think when we, when, when we're talking about advertising on city property, we as a city, if we're to be, if we're to, to really look at this, we can't limit that to just benches. When we're talking about advertising on city property, we really are opening that up to, we can't just limit that to benches. Those, you know, those are, those benches are not, and I don't, the way, just the way I see it. And I know I can think of calls in the past where there have actually been complaints because people have been sitting on those benches or laying on those benches. We've actually received complaints about it because it was blocking the advertising because those benches are advertising benches. I don't know that those benches were ever really intended to be benches for this ICU. I, I hear you. I know. But I don't know that those benches were ever intended to be benches that people were supposed to sit on. They are in all reality, those are advertising benches intended for advertising. So if we're talking about advertising, where do we stop with that? Do we let?
Well, so I guess here's the issue is when I put this on the agenda, and I should have made it more clear, it was to discuss bench advertising, not advertising as a whole. And it obviously worked for a period of 40 years. So we didn't have all of a sudden people coming and putting up, you know, two foot by two foot, other advertising signs. So, and I understand, you know, people that sit on them are typically vagrants that are doing the same thing on the corner of 10th and White Sands and out in front of Walmart and various different areas. So I understand that and I think that, you know, that there's.
The, the difference too here is, is this gentleman or whoever it was, at, at one time there was two of them, two vendors that did it for us. Um, they had a contract with the city to, to advertise on those benches and place those benches. You know, I can't take a sign and put it up out there legally, you know? So it's not just that it's.
No, you're right.
They had a contract and.
But that's my point. My point is you can't just do that. You have to have a contract with the city. So where does that end? Does it end with just benches? And if it does, what do we do when a billboard company or some other sign company says, we want to put our signs in your right of way? And we say, no, I'm sorry, because now we're getting into this whole, and then they say, but what, what's that?
We had that in the past. We, we had a, a couple of gentlemen, business owners in the community that would paint their trucks with their logos on the side of them, big box trucks, and then park them around the community in various locations in city right of way. And it became a problem because they would leave them there for, for weeks at a time, you know? And we, I, I don't remember what we did to address it. It was, um, you know, quite a few years ago, probably eight or 10 years ago. But, uh, you know, I'm kind of like, say, I'm torn on that as well. One way or the other, I really, uh, the, the benches and that's where we could, you know? I think the city manager's issue with it was that we were, we're leasing out city right of way essentially. But on the other side of that, the, the, uh, the benefit to the community is the, um, advertising for the businesses and giving, you know, people a place to sit down, you know, if, say they're elderly or they're handicapped or along those lines. So.
I mean, I never, I don't have any.
I definitely think it's, it's worth looking into.
Yeah.
If us as a governing body want to allow it, we're allowed to do that, you know? So.
There isn't anything prohibiting.
Go ahead.
There isn't anything that prohibits it, that where the issue has come in, um, and these benches have been here for a long.
Long time.
It was here when, when they first came in, the two different, two different vendors. Staff at that time found a way for these benches to be, for this to be approved by the commission at that time. I won't go into all the detail. But things have changed since that was originally done. It was done by, with an RFP, request for proposal. Uh, no other RFP has ever gone out. They, they don't last 20 years. As with other agreements, lease agreements, et cetera, this, that we keep coming across and come before you. We can't, we can't go and say, well, you can put, you know, in this case, a bench in public right of way on city property and not receive fair market value for it. So to, whether it's a bench, it's a sign, it's a billboard, whatever the case may be, something that's on public property. We're going through this right now with the toy train depot, with a girl scout hut, with the airport grill. Any number of buildings, locations that we lease out, we would have to get an appraisal. When this RFP went out originally, it should have been city staff ultimately commissioned approval on the RFP on where these things would be placed. It wasn't left up to the city. It was the other way around. If it's going to be for the public benefit, then they should be placed, if using benches that's, uh, as the example, they should be placed at bus stops. They shouldn't be placed in such a way that the public doesn't have access to it and the real, only real value is to the vendor that has the advertising on it. So there, there are a number of issues that if we go down, down this road and limiting, limiting, limiting it to, to benches, um, I'll refer to the attorney, but we get into, you know, why are we limiting it to just this?
Well, how many, how many requests have we had to the city to put advertising in the city right of way? I mean, it, it's not like that comes up every day. I mean, around, around, uh, election time. Well, every now and then we'll have, we'll have an election sign or a campaign sign in the right of way or, or an auction sign or a, a garage sign, but usually those are only there for a couple hours. Yeah, they're there for a couple of hours and then, you know, the difference is, is this is a contract where those aren't. And but I don't know, like I say.
And this contract, this type of contract would need to be opened up to the public.
Well, we just, we just put an RFP out like they did in the, in the past.
We could.
And, and the gentleman could bid on it, you know, whoever.
It would need to be a whole different RFP than when, what went out 15, 20 years ago.
An RFP worked for, for 20 years. So, I mean.
Well, so did any number of leases that we had or even handshake agreements. Times have changed and.
What's changed?
Uh, state law.
Okay.
State statute, um, as one of the items that you will see when the, when the, um, the annual audit comes, comes before, comes before commission. That is one thing that not just for Alamo Gordo, but everywhere around the state. That is now an item that is audited for every municipality, county, et cetera, is your, your agreements, your leases, are they fair market value? To put a value to the corner of 10th and Washington versus the value of, uh, First Street and Maryland, uh, in public right of way. Each one's going to have a different value.
Do we have an S, a guess of how much the value of the property is?
I wouldn't want to go there. I, I, I really don't know. We're, we're having, we're having.
I'm just thinking of the footprint that it's really taken up.
With the, with the appraisers.
Yeah.
Right now that are, that are contracted with the city that are doing the valuations for, for the property that the toy train depot sits on, the Lions Club building, the, um, girl scout hut, our fairgrounds piece of property.
Right.
By the, uh, fairgrounds.
Where all the cars are parked?
Well, actually those are parked in state right of way.
Okay.
We have gone back and forth with the appraisers for months now, trying to get a final value. So I, I, I really can't give you a number. The other thing with putting stuff in right of way, um, and I'm not saying this has been an issue within the past few months, but over the life of this, of this agreement, or actually it was two agreements, uh, different vendors at different times. Benches were out into the, into the area, blocking corner ramps, whatever.
Right.
Uh, or shifted back onto private property. Um, it's, it's been, you know, we don't have, there isn't a standard throughout the entire city to where, uh, we can say, okay, you go to Curbing Gutter and five foot back, that's city right of way or 10 foot back. It, it varies throughout the entire city. Then we throw in things like white, um, uh, White Sands. That's, doesn't belong to the city. That belongs to the state. We have a maintenance agreement. But, you know, prime advertising location, now we can do what commission approves in Alameda Park or at the zoo, uh, the properties that we own, but that's not, that's not city right of way. That's state right of way. We have to apply to the state to actually use that right of way, uh, for utility lines, et cetera. You know, I'm not saying it can't be done. It can't be done the way it wa, it was done.
Right.
And it's not an overnight, let's fix it. It's like for the, you know, it's been ongoing with the, the girl scout hut, the toy trade depot. These agreements have, have, have lapsed and we have to, we have to address it. And at the end of the day, um, it could be like the benches, benches are removed. The girl scout hut, the toy train depot, when we finally get the, you know, the value of the. Um, the Girl Scout Hut, the Toy Train Depot, when we finally get the, you know, the value of the land is X, um, here's the benefit that is provided to the community. We can't just say, well, those two things offset. We have to be able to justify that. And if, if we can't, then there's a value to that, to that piece of property, whether it's for advertising, signs, benches, it's the Toy Train Depot, et cetera, and the Toy Train Depot may not be able to um, continue doing business. And I don't have that number. We have, we're not to that point in the discussion yet with them, but you know, it's a, it's a real possibility.
And that, and it's my understanding that there hasn't been a contract on this since last March?
Uh, it's when it lapsed, yes.
Okay, and it, yeah.
And we gave an extension so that, because the people, the businesses that were advertising had already paid. Uh, so we gave that, I gave that extension.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And you did that because people were paying for their advertising and you didn't want to disrupt that?
Yeah, actually, the extension went to last March. Or to this, yes, this, this March and now, and actually all, uh, for Mr. Tumal Naro, and I butcher that name constantly, but those bench, his benches have, uh, he, he's removed everything. Um, there are some stragglers out there that didn't, don't belong to him and those are, are being removed. Uh, we have no idea whose they are, but they are, they are, um, they are being removed.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
There isn't anything that, that prevents whether it's, it's Mr. Tumal Naro and his benches outside of the right of way on, on private property, those benches or signs or whatever. Uh, those, those can be placed and placed tomorrow and, uh, as long as, just like with any, any business residents, as long as it's, it's not a, a, um, a safety hazard, you know, blocking line of sight for, for vehicles turning into and off of, off of roadways.
So it's just a matter of talking to private property owners to see if, yeah.
From the city standpoint, that's not something that, that, that we're going to regulate unless it, unless it becomes a safety issue, traffic hazard.
Right, right.
Short of that, yeah, that's, we, we don't, we, staff wise, don't, will not regulate that.
Yeah, and I think that that, I think that's part of the issue and when people have called me, that's what I've had to tell them. We're not saying you can't have them. We're saying that they can't be in city right of way. So, I, you know, there's lots of businesses and, and really, if you think about White Sands, because you, like you said, it's a state highway, it would be more beneficial to talk to some of the business owners and, and perhaps put some of those benches on private property. Um, so I mean, I think there is a solution. I just think that, uh, it's a matter of.
If it was something we were going to, again, using, using benches, um, that, staff wise, we, we're going to put out uh, in an RFP format, um, off the top of my head, uh, quite a number of the bus stops, we obviously have a contract and agreement with Z-Trans, um, for the, for the bus service, uh, quite a number of their stops. Z-Trans has, has put up the struck, the, the benches and the structures and whatnot. There are a number of them that don't uh, have, have a place for someone to sit. Uh, there are a number of stops that I can think of off the top of my head, as you get up to the top of Tenth Street, where we wouldn't have the room, uh, to, within the right of way, place a bench and not be on private property. Others that Z-Trans has, um, would, it would be easy to make the justification that that is in the public's interest to put one on every corner going up Tenth Street, First Street, Indian Wells. Um, that's, you know, s- stretching the justification for the need uh, to, to have, you know, just that sheer number, sheer number of benches.
Yeah, it's a tough one for sure.
How, how long have the benches been there?
Uh, mm. Since 2002, or very early 2000, I think in two, actually, there's a number of, a number, not from Mr. Tumal Naro, one of the previous bench people. Um, we've had some bases and, and parts of benches out in the public works yard since, I believe it was 2004, 2005.
I think that's where some people are probably having the issue is that they've been there this long and now all this sudden it's.
Now it's wrong.
Now it's wrong. So, I mean, I understand.
Well, no, it's, it's been wrong for a while.
Right, right, right. And I think that's probably the issue that people don't understand is that.
Why we have, why we have the agreements in place.
Yeah. We, we can't have comments from down there.
Yeah, sorry.
Um.
We can talk to them after, if fact.
But, uh, could we have staff look into, you know, the, the legal side of it as far as us doing an RFP on this again, uh, in the future?
An R, an RFP can go out. We'll have to show that it's in the public interest.
Yeah, which.
Um, which means we, staff wise, would need to say, okay, here is, using again benches, here is.
The benefit to the community.
The benefit to the community.
Yeah.
Um, we're going to have to have, just like anything that we put out, what, what's the value uh, of the area that's going to have the bench with advertising on it? Um, having.
There has to be a little leeway in state law, because you go to Las Cruces, they've got benches and bus stops. You go to Albuquerque, they've got benches and bus stops. So there has to be some kind of a little bit of leeway in the law on that.
Benches and, yes, you're exactly right, benches and bus stops.
And, and maybe that's the answer is, is have them place the benches at the bus stop, at each bus stop, and you can utilize the advertising, you know, and work and.
Right, but then there has to be, there's a value.
Because that's the value there. They put the bench at the bus stop and that's the benefit to the community.
That doesn't, that doesn't offset the, that wouldn't offs, offset the value of
Yeah, we could.
What the company is receiving.
Yeah, we could, you know, have y'all look at it, you know, bring us some information and then, you know.
And there's not 70 bus stops.
I don't know how many there are, honestly, but.
Well, there's not 70.
You know, like, uh, over on Indian Wells, I know for a fact.
I don't even think there's 35. Well, and you know, then, that's a good point. Indian Wells has a bus stop. There's never been a bunch, a bus, a bench there.
Several, several bus stops with benches and little shelters, you know, and those are in city right of way. So what's the difference between an advertising bench and Z-Trans? And, and I'm not picking on Z-Trans. They do provide a really good service to the community, but what's the difference between allowing them to put their bench in their shelter for their bus stop and this gentleman to put his bench and his advertising on a corner, you know?
Because it's a bus stop.
What's the difference?
And that is the difference. It's a bus stop. I'm not saying don't put a bench at a bus stop. I'm telling you, there's not 70 bus stops.
We're allowing Z-Trans to put their bench at the bus stop
Mm-hmm.
on city right of way, but we won't allow this gentleman with a, you know, that had a contract previously, doesn't now, but had.
Well.
To do, so you, that's the issue that we have.
I think we go back to, I think we go back to the item and it's advertising. I, I, so here's, here's my thing. If this wasn't an advertising bench, we wouldn't be talking about this. We would not be having this discussion.
Yeah, but I think that has a lot more to do with the community. It's the community that's called upon, has to ask us, hey, this,
I get it.
This is what's going on.
I get it.
But that's, I mean, regardless if it's a bench or a sign or.
I understand that. So if it was just a blank bench, because it's a service to the community.
But, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a bench that had advertising.
Advertising bench, that's right. So we wouldn't be having.
I mean, if, if it was a blank bench, then it was a blank bench, but it's not.
We wouldn't be having this discussion if it wasn't an advertising bench, and I think that that's the point. The point is, is it's not, this is not, w- we can say this is an, uh, I mean, because the city could put their own benches up, I suppose. I mean, if it's, if it's a service to the community, then the city could put their own benches up, right?
We could, but if I'm not mistaken too, Z-Trans does advertise on those shelters. I think they do have advertising on the outsides of those.
Oh, maybe they do. I don't know.
You know, um, it's just a discussion at this point, but we have the, you know, legal research a little bit and, and, uh, look at how we could make it work and, and look at a new RFP potentially, and then maybe bring it back if, if the commission feels the need.
And you need to remember also that, you know, Alamogordo, we're not, we're not the only ones that are dealing with these leases that were 20 years, 30 years, 50 years, 8 years.
We've, we've got a lot of those, that, all of them need to be looked at, you know.
Yeah, as they, as they, and what we're doing right now, and this is, um, actually it was something that came up during the audit, so it's been, uh, I can talk about that, right? No. In broad terms, there are a lot of things that, for whatever reason, we don't have a written policy for. This is one of many areas in dealing with existing leases, future leases and whatnot, where a policy is under development, a written policy.
Yeah, it sounds like there's some interest amongst the commission to, to bring, you know, to at least research it and look into it a little bit, so.
That's.
You know.
Okay.
Sorry, I want to drug out a little longer. I probably should have.
Anybody else? No more questions? Okay. Alrighty, we are going to move on to item 12. Uh, sorry about that. Oh, oh, what is it doing? Okay. We're going to move on to item 12, Consider and Act Upon Resolution 2023 dash 03 to establish a city charter committee. And City Clerk Rachel Hughes has some information on that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is the resolution I was speaking of in my presentation, um, to establish a city charter that is mandated by Article 12 of the city charter itself to appoint a committee every 10 years to make a, uh, review, um, to see of the effectiveness of the city charter. Um, so the resolution does state that within 60 days of its appointment, the, um, committee members shall make recommendations to the governing body, uh, which is the commission. Um, it also states in this resolution that it shall not consist of less than seven residents of the city, um, which is, uh, by state statute. Um, it also says that it shall be no more than 14 residents of the city.
Okay.
Just a recommendation on this from the, the last time or the time that I was here for this, um, we may look at just one of us, a point one per, because I don't know about you guys, but if you've been on committees, you've got 14 people trying to agree.
I was thinking the same thing.
You know what I mean? I, I almost think smaller is better in this case. Um, so, but, I mean, this kind of leaves it open to where we can do seven or up to 14, so.
So one from each district?
One from, I don't even know if I know, uh, in my district. I, I do, but people that would be interested in doing this.
And then I would just appoint one at large, I guess.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so.
Yeah, I kind of, I agree with you.
You know what I mean?
I do, yeah, I agree.
It's hard enough to get us seven to agree on something. I couldn't imagine getting 14 people to agree, so. I'll just make a motion. We approve Resolution 2023 dash 03.
Okay. Nobody else had any more questions? No, okay.
Commissioner Riden, just to be clear, are you, um, are you, um, approving to amend it to only seven?
No, let's just leave it, leave it the way it is, because it says no less than seven and no more than 14. But I'm just, as a recommendation to everybody, uh, we probably ought to just do one per district, because it's, like I say, getting a committee of 14 people, uh, that's going to be a nightmare for whoever the staff liaison is and trying to get everybody on the same page.
So approving it like this does not hold us to that, though?
Yeah.
So you don't want to, you don't want to amend it, to say?
No, because we can, we can go from seven to 14.
Okay, okay.
We can appoint however many we want, but.
Okay.
And it looked like Rachel was appointing the city manager as the staff liaison for the committee.
Or his designated, which is Rachel.
How about Richie? Okay, anyway, the motion's on the floor, sorry.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Riden to approve Resolution 2023 dash 03. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Josh Riden.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes, 7-0. Yes, I'm sorry.
It's my night to keep adding stuff to it. So Rachel, do you need any clarification from commission using your form, the application?
Um, no, I don't think so. The application.
Because you have, you have to vet the candidates?
Yes, so, um, attached to that item, uh, the resolution item, if you see, I also attached an application on there. I don't know if you had any questions of that. Um, just that you shall, um, submit this to me by, um, what did I write, the 7th?
Tomorrow.
Um, yes, the 7th of February, um, for your nominations, so I can include them in the agenda of the 14th.
Okay, so that's the next step. The next step is to take this application. Everybody come up with one person from their district. Um, I'll come up with somebody at large.
Specify district.
What's that?
It doesn't specify district.
Yes, it has to be from your district, I believed in it.
I think we, I think that's what it said earlier.
So just, just one person.
Just one person.
So it's just one person? It doesn't have to be from their district?
It's just one person. Um, that's the way the resolution is, is written. However, if you want the resolution to actually state that, um, that is up to you. That was just opened.
Probably be easier if we're not limited to our districts.
Okay, okay, so just one person, okay.
Within city limits.
Yeah.
Okay, I misunderstood that, sorry.
How is the, uh, party affiliation going to be enforced if it's not equal, but we all, each nominated one person? What's the follow-up to that?
Right, um, I just pretty much get that voter registration, obviously, if, if I see, for instance, that one, there's like, you know, five or six compared to one or two, that's obviously not comparable, so I can certainly let you know as I'm getting those applications and let you know, hey, there is a really big, um, difference here. So per state statute, they can't be, like, the majority can't be one party and then there's like very minimal in the other.
So we might have to rescind the nomination if the balance is off.
Exactly, but we should be able to know once those applications are coming in. I might, I, I'll, I could let you guys know as soon as I can. As soon as I have those applications in.
Okay, so just so we're clear, we can't have, to put the, put this in simplified terms, we can't have too much of one party or the other.
That's correct, and that's per state statute. That's not the city ordinance or in the city chart.
Oh, this should be fun.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Simple majority.
Say that again?
It can't be more than a simple majority, so you can have four of a party.
So, yeah, not, no, I get it, not more than four of one party. Okay, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just not going to take anybody's crap, that's.
What if they're independents or declined estates?
Declined estate, I have no idea. That's a city clerk question.
I guess, as long as we don't have more, more than four of e, either, then I guess we're okay. And then if it's independents or declined estates, then.
Then they don't have a party.
Yeah, well, declined estate has a party, but they don't disclose it.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if they're going off of voter registration, it says declined estate, they don't have a party.
It's going to be off of voter registration, so it's not what's on their application and they said, I declined estate.
Uh-huh.
We're going to.
No, their voter registration, I think, can say declined estate.
It does say declined estate, yes.
Yes, so they, but anyway, okay.
Yeah, just depends on how you want to vote.
Yep.
How early you want to vote.
Yeah, if you want to vote in the primary or in the general, so.
Yeah, let's not overthink it.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so everybody understands what they're supposed to do and the deadline you said is February 7th, right?
I'm, yes ma'am, thanks.
I think you said February 7th.
Yes, so it is, um, February 14th is when you will be appointing, so it's going to be seven days prior to that.
Right, February 14th, the meeting, yeah. Okay, alrighty. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? Don't all jump at once.
Who made the motion?
Yeah, I know, I'm not done yet. I'm just laughing. Everybody wants to get out of here. I had a motion from Commissioner McDonald, a second from Commissioner Riden. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Commissioner Ruden. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and we are adjourned.